Okay. Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, March 5th, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. Members Witherspoon, Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, and Troop. Councilmember Brzezinski is absent.
We'd like you to please stand for the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence. Get up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council President, the city employees, there's a couple of city employees that both lost their wives this week, if we could keep them in our prayers as well. Okay, approval of the minutes from the February 19th City Council meeting and bills for payment on March 7th and 14th, 2025, members Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. Okay, this morning, we have a presentation from PAL. Sergeant Lennox, can you come up?
Good morning, President Witherspoon and Council. Thanks for having us here this morning. A couple of weeks ago, we had a fundraiser for the Erie Police Athletic League, and at that ball, or fundraiser, we honored several significant leaders within our community. One of them was more or less a lifetime achievement award for our own Mel Witherspoon. I know a lot of, a lot of kind things, well-deserving things were said about Mel that, that evening. We just want to reiterate, Mel, you know, your almost forty years of service in this community, in this city. You're a generational leader, Mel, and you did it on every front, and whether, and I said this a few weeks ago, and I mean this, you know, when you look up the dictionary of how to move the needle as it relates to our youth, there's a picture of you in that dictionary. You know, you, you did make the blueprint for how to establish and sustain youth programs throughout the city, and we appreciate your leadership in that arena. More importantly, you've proven that as a leader in this city with your dedication of service on this council for so many decades, and we appreciate that. The citizens will never know what you did behind closed doors to make this city a better place, and we appreciate that. So I'd like to end it on reading what we read about Mel Witherspoon at our ball. Mr. Witherspoon is a remarkable leader in the Erie community. He has dedicated nearly forty-five years to advocating for the youth. His journey began in 1990 when he envisioned a program that would unite young people through the love of basketball, leading to the creation of Spoons Basketball. His commitment is evident in every initiative, as he genuinely believes in the transformative power of youth engagement. Mr. Witherspoon collaborated with the Erie Police Athletic League during Celebrate Erie for the PAL/Spoons 3V3 basketball tournament that will, that will remain for years to come. This partnership showcases his ability to bring together diverse groups and create opportunities for kids from all walks of life, no matter their background or neighborhood, the east side, west side, upper or lower. Mr. Witherspoon fosters a sense of community and teamwork in every game. His mantra, quote, "The basketball doesn't matter, it's about the kids getting together and having fun," end quote, truly exemplifies his leadership philosophy. He understands that the connections formed on the court extend far beyond basketball, shaping the future of youth in our city. So for that, Mr. Witherspoon, we thank you, and as a token of our appreciation, we got you a plaque, again, and, and we got your letter of proclamation at the ball, so thank you, Mr. Witherspoon.
Medians adjourn. I want to thank the officers of PAL. I appreciate it, and you don't do something all the time to expect something. PAL was part of my life growing up in New Jersey. At that time, the purpose of PAL was to start a boxing program to keep us off the streets and out of trouble. I was part of that program. When I was in a lighter weight division, it was fun. Then when I went to the middleweight division, middle-heavy, I didn't like getting hit by a big fella, so I joined the gospel group at that time. But PAL is a very important part of our community. It's an excellent program, a lot of kids who needs direction, and many of them don't get the hugs when they go home. And it's a beautiful sight to see police officers hugging these kids. So I thank you very, very much, Officer Lennox and his team, and we'll continue to work together. Thank you. Okay, we'll continue with the agenda. We have public comments.
Anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Anyone to speak on a repository sale? Anyone to speak on a repository sale? Hearing none, public comments.
Any comments from the public? Please come to the podium, you have five minutes. Please give us your name and your municipality.
Good morning, Council. David Baznek, I'm the president and executive director of Emergicare, so 1926 Peach Street. Wanted to take the opportunity today, now especially we're getting into the warmer weather, to publicly thank the Erie Fire Department and the City of Erie for your support during the snow-mageddon crisis. And so, we all remember the snow that we received right after Thanksgiving there. It was certainly a challenging time for everybody. It was especially a challenging time for us. So those four or five days that we responded to emergencies, having the extra assistance from the firefighters and even from the streets department was key in us being able to respond and take care of the citizens of Erie. So in that short time span, we still managed to respond to three hundred and five emergencies, and at any one time, we had between two and three ambulances stuck. And so, having the fire department there, having the men and women of that agency be able to help us and support us is, it was paramount during that period of time. So I told Chief Trot that I certainly wanted to come and make sure that it was on the public record that we thanked the city for that. Secondly, you allotted some funding for us this year. I've been working with the administration, we've met several times, and with various council members to discuss some of the barriers we have with EMS funding, and are currently working on an agreement right now to, to make sure that everything is, is done right and it's put through the right way. I can't tell you how much we appreciate that assistance and how we're going to be able to put that to good use to continue to serve the citizens of Erie. For those of you that are not familiar, the City of Erie is a foundational component of Emergicare. July 1st, 1983 is when Emergicare began to service the City of Erie, and back then, it was the city along with the hospitals that actually created Emergicare. Fast forward to today, we respond to over twenty thousand emergencies on an annual basis in the city. Usually it ends up around more closer to twenty-two thousand. So that's twenty-two thousand EMS responses just in the municipality of the city. So we look forward to continuing to serve the city in years to come. I certainly would like to invite all of council to be able to do a work session or something at Emergicare someday, so you can see what your funding is going towards, so you can understand the EMS situation right now, not just here for the city, but just regionally. There's a lot of bad information that gets put out there, a lot of people that don't know what they're talking about, so I want to make sure that you are all very educated and informed, just as we've worked hard with the administration, they've been very good at communicating with us and working with Chief Trot. I want to make sure that you guys also have access to that same information, so you're aware of everything that's going on. So again, thank you very much. I look forward to continuing to work with all of you, and our door is always open, so don't be afraid to reach out, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Good morning, Council. Alexandra Iwanenko, I'm a City of Erie resident, here to bring up a concern about immigration that I'm sure all of you are aware of in the community. The City of Erie is a certified welcoming community. With that certification comes the responsibility that law enforcement doesn't have policies in place that would detain or deport immigrants. That's a one-star certification. If the City of Erie eventually wants to get up to a three-star certification, that certification would require there to be a policy that clarifies the jurisdiction between the local law enforcement and the immigration, federal law enforcement. So I'm just here today to ask council to look at those policies, consider what they look like, consider if they're being followed. I know the mayor's January 31st statement said that it's not the focus or the responsibility of the police department to detain immigrants, and I would agree with that. The police don't have the ability to detain and deport, but they can call immigration, law enforcement agencies, they can call CBP, they can call ICE. And the mayor had stated that Erie PD really would only call if a person was engaged in a violent crime or was being investigated for a violent crime. I have received a lot of reports over the last couple of weeks from community members saying their family members are being stopped by Erie police, they are being asked for documents, and immigration is being called, and they are then in immigration custody, which I believe would lead to their detention or deportation. I have confirmed with an immigration ICE 213 form, that's a form that contains a narrative as how the person was apprehended by immigration. And one of those ICE 213 forms says Erie Police called Erie Border Patrol Station because the person was found without an ID. So again, I know the policy of the city is not to refer, I'm concerned that policy might not be, be followed, and I would just like council and the administration to consider whether those phone calls are being made to immigration outside the scope of a violent crime or a serious crime. I'm happy to answer any questions, happy to do an educational session if the administration or council would be interested in that, but just wanted to raise that, I hadn't had that document before to confirm, although that was my suspicion, and, and just want to make you guys aware of that. So thank you very much. Like I said, I'm, I'm available to answer any questions and, and would love to continue this conversation. Immigration is very complicated, it's very difficult, and with the administration, we're seeing changes every single day. It's really hard to predict what's going to happen, so if we can just make people feel, feel safe and protected within the city, I would love to be able to work with you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard?
This is my beautiful sister-in-law, Carol, who you people are today, the city council, as we understand, are going to name a street after my brother Tom. And what an honor it is to be here with her to discuss some of the things that Tom did. If you'd just tell him what's up, Carol.
Hello, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. Tom was a very busy guy, and I think his faith really helped him to participate in what he did at, with the Bay Harbor Neighborhood Association and our West Bay Front. He was very active in both. Tom would walk the neighborhood, talk to all the neighbors. He believed in the value of every person. He had a deep devotion to improving the area there. He was very instrumental in getting a nuisance bar closed, also very instrumental, as you know, Chuck, to get the light at Cranberry Street Bay Front. So he was a great guy, and we really appreciate and are honored for this legacy that you're going to be voting on. Thank you very much for the consideration, and bless all of you.
Thank you very, very much. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none, we'll continue with the agenda.
Okay, ordinances for final passage. Council file number 16502, official ordinance 132025, and ordinance appropriating the sum of $40,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. This contribution is from Erie Insurance for use by the Bureau of Police. Sponsored by Councilmember Schoff, seconded by Councilmember Troop, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16502, and now known as Official File Ordinance 132025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 132025, finally by yea six, nay zero. Council File Number 16503, official ordinance 142025, and ordinance appropriating the sum of $127,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. A police crisis communication vehicle through $127,000 grant from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Department of Community and Economic Development. Sponsored by Councilmember Schoff, seconded by Councilmember Troop, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16503, and now known as Official File Ordinance 142025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 142025 by yea six, nay zero. Council File Number 16504, official ordinance 152025, and ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of Erie, Pennsylvania. Sponsored by Councilmember Witherspoon, seconded by Councilmember Flores, the Council File Bill Ordinance Number 16504, and now known as Official File Ordinance 152025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 152025, finally by yea six, nay zero. Okay, ordinance, Council File Number 16505, official ordinance 162025, and ordinance appropriating the sum of $50,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue to be received from a community partnerships program grant administered by the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, which is DCNR, and providing for the expenditure thereof. Sponsored by Councilmember Flores, seconded by Councilmember Nelson, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16505, and now known as Official File Ordinance 162025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 162025, finally by yea six, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading, Council File Number 16506, and ordinance appropriating the sum of $21,600 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue to be received from a community partnership program grant administered by the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, DCNR, and providing for the expenditure thereof. Sponsored by Councilmember Flores, seconded by Councilmember Nelson, the Council File Ordinance Number 16506, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council pass Official File, read it, Council File Ordinance 16506 by yea six, nay zero, I'm first reading. It's not quite 9:30, so this takes us to new business. Oh, no, we have a public hearing. Oh, geez. Okay, well, that doesn't start till 9:30. So we can start new business, and then we'll have to stop at 9:30.
Motion to move the balance.
Second.
It's been moved in second.
Separate number two under new business.
Any other separations?
Any other?
Any other separations? Moving the balance of the agenda, members Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Troop, and Witherspoon. Titus, too, you can have a vote.
Thank you.
Okay. Number two, sponsored by Councilmember Nelson, seconded by Mr. Troop, resolve that Erie City Council designates the 900 block of West Fourth Street as Tom Hoffman Way after the man that led the Bay and Harbor Neighborhood Watch decades ago. Discussion?
Any discussion?
I wanted to thank the family for coming out today. You know, every city council member since, since Mel wrote that great ordinance gets to name two streets in the term that they are in council. to name two streets in the term that they are in council. So, we each, we each get to pick two people in the history of Pennsyl, in the history of Erie to recognize. So, I'm using my first one on Tom. Yeah, I live in the West Bay Front neighborhood, and, you know, as, in the last few years, as I've gone to different neighborhood watches, as, as we've done Porch Fest, you know, he was, he was someone who had some, some recommendations, you know, I sat in his living room and he had me, I had a little notepad in front of me jotting down different people that I should reach out to that had really nice porches. I don't know which one of his grandsons is a DJ, but he had some musical recommendations as well. Vinnie? Yeah? You know, he's, he's been, of anyone I think of in that neighborhood, of 14,000 people, that neighborhood's 14,000 people, you know, I can only think of, you know, maybe one other person that's as impactful as him. So, I've, I've appreciated him as a neighbor. I think that he is the exact example of what it looks like to dedicate a street after someone, as he dedicated so much of himself after that street. So, I appreciate you guys coming out, and I'm honored to be able to do this for your family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. I also want to say thank you to the Hoffman family and friends. Today's reading for Ash Wednesday in my church was from Matthew, Chapter 6, 3 to 4. Know what the right hand, left hand is doing. He exemplified service to his neighborhood and his community without wanting the praise and without, you know, always, you know, wanting that pat in the back. So, thank you to him for his dedication and for everyone like him that does service in our community with outgetting that daily accolade. So, thank you very much.
Any one else?
Yeah, Mr. President, I want to say congratulations to the Hoffman family. I didn't know Tom, but he sounds like a great individual. I do know Bob, and I know he's a great individual, too. Posted, posted his name on social media one time about coaches, and 100 players responded how great of a coach he was, so, congratulations.
Thank you.
Voting on the resolution, members Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Trup, and Witherspoon. Resolution passes yea six, nay zero. Okay, we can start the public hearing. Those that are going to testify, if you would raise your right hand. R18678 from Dalar Limited, doing business as Lakeside Tavern in Waterford to Country Fair to be utilized at the retail facility located, located at 2266 East 38th Street per the request of Attorney Klonowski.
Thank you. Good morning, Council. My name is Barry Klonowski. I am Council for Country Fair, and indeed, our purpose in being here this morning is to request the transfer of a license from Waterford into the city of Erie. The liquor code requires that we come here and, and get your stamp of approval by way of resolution. So, that's what we're here to do. I'm not going to be the one that's going to talk to you because you don't want to hear from me too much. I did bring two representatives from Country Fair just to tell you a little bit about the store where we intend on moving this license to, and to answer any questions you might have about the transfer. We do already have, I think we counted, eight licenses operating in the city of Erie. We have, I think, 26 licenses in our stores in Erie County. So, we're not new to this game, and we take it, we take our obligations under the liquor code very seriously. But I would like to introduce a couple people to you and let them talk instead of having the lawyer talk, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have along the way. We've brought Dave Dankert with us and A.J. Semino. I will let them introduce themselves to you, tell you what they do at Country Fair, and tell you a little bit about the store and answer any questions you might have. Thank you. Dave?
Good morning, folks. Yeah, I'm Dave Dankert, I'm one of the directors of operations. We, we just want to make sure everybody's on the same page, and our location, we call it Store Number 50, which is at 38th and McLoughlin Street. Been operating there for over 25 years. I've been around so long, I had the opportunity to help them open the store when it was new. But that being said, it's very dated, and we'd like to, we'd like to upgrade. We're also looking at adding adult beverage sales, as Mr. Klonowski alluded to. And as a result of that, we want to try to build a, a new location there, make it nicer for our neighborhood, make it nicer for our customers. You know, we have a, kind of our goal in life is to be good to our folks that work for us, be good to our community, be good to our shoppers, you know? It's a, it's a symbiotic relationship. We see the evolution there to expand the offerings, and we also have, as Barry alluded to, numerous locations in the county and in the city, and we've had our fair share of experience dealing with restricted item sales. As a consequence, we made it a decision in the city and in Pennsylvania in total that every alcohol sale we make will be 100% carded and checked ID, okay? We don't make a sale without checking ID. We just won't do it. If they don't have it, we don't make the sale. We realize that that might cost us some sales, but it's a smart thing to do, and it's a responsible thing to do. So, that's what we do. As we entertain this, you know, we see this opportunity to rebuild this location to a larger store, adding some seating, which would be required, but it will also give folks a place to gather, okay? To have seating and have a good meal. We can upgrade our facilities. Currently, the store does not have public restrooms, but we would have, and I think that would be an asset as well. We just really look forward to beautifying that whole corner, you know? Make it a cornerstone, make it a, make it a place that really shines, and some of you may know that our corporate office is right down the street, okay? At 30th Street, it's only eight blocks away. And me, personally, I'd love to have a nice, really nice location close to our office, you know? That's another impetus, another reason we want to do this, so. I don't know if you folks have any questions for me. I could obviously have A.J. talk to you, he's our, he's our engineer. He's been working on a whole bunch of locations. I'm sure you folks know we're in the midst of trying to get the flagship going downtown. That also will be a Erie license. Things are starting to take shape. I don't know if any of you folks follow social media, I'm not that kind of guy, I'm an old guy, but we've been posting things, showing some progress, the, the construction, the painting, you know, that sort of thing. It's really coming together, and A.J. is the fellow spearheading that, so. Anyway, I also brought along, and I don't know if you folks want them, but I'd be happy to share it with you. We have a policy in our company for handling age-restricted sales, specifically, the policy I have in my hand is for beer and wine for Pennsylvania. And it outlines what we do, our expectations, how we train folks, and I'd be certainly happy to give it to you folks if you'd like a copy.
Can you just answer a question for me?
Absolutely.
What number would this make your location have, the sales of wine? Like, how many licenses do you have in your operation right now?
Oh, well, like I said, we have 26 in Erie County.
Okay.
We have another, I'd say probably 15 in the rest of the state of PA.
That have licenses?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and we also have seven locations in New York that are licensed, and we have five locations in Ohio that are licensed.
I know from my experience, that is one of the smaller co-fair locations, and I think that the people in that area and the people who use that facility would appreciate a bathroom and the upgrades that will be happening, so I don't see it as a bad thing. I know I've had people mention that they would like a place to go for like a coffee or to sit down and have a small meal, and I know that the co-fairs have been filling the gap with the upgrades that you guys have been doing around the city, because I want to say there's about four or five upgraded businesses just in my little area that I go around.
Sure.
So, I don't think it's a bad thing to do the upgrades. It just is a little concerning when we're pulling all of these licenses out from the rural areas into the city. I feel, I feel for those areas, so.
That's a great, screw those areas, we just represent the city.
So, that's my Country Fair.
Okay.
From Lifetime, I mean, I, I grew up on 38th Street, now I'm on 43rd Street, so. But I also go to a lot of other Country Fair stores in the city and around, so definitely witness that you do ask every single person. I can definitely attest to that. So, I have a, are you tearing like everything down and creating a whole new store?
That, that is the initial plan, yes. We were looking to try to build elsewhere on the site, but the footprint just isn't quite big enough to do it.
So, where would this be going then? Like?
Probably half of where the store is now, but then maybe a little bit further backward.
Okay. But the, there's a lot, I mean, the railroad tracks are right there, too, so.
Oh, gosh, yes, but there's a whole bunch of property between us, and then there's Connecto Electric, and then, and then the railroad track, yeah.
Right, right, okay. So, my, one of my things is, someone just actually approached me last week to mention how bright your lighting is. I mean, I love Country Fair. I, I go there practically every day for coffee, your breakfast bagels, what have you. But, decaf. But anyways, I have people say about the lighting is so bright, sometimes that the person had commented they live like down a street, but it still affects them. And I don't know how you could try to regulate the brightness, like the people who live right across the street from Country Fair now, I mean, again, it, it's bright, and I was always wondering that if, you know, their shades are drawn and that, it, it does affect the residential person when things are just too bright. So, and then we have migratory birds and things like that. But I, as much as I see progress, and I think, again, it's a wonderful thing, and I'm all for Country Fair, but there are some neighborhood beer distributor and things like that, so, you know, there's competition. I mean, they say competition is a good thing. But anyways, thank you. I, I'm just curious as to how all of that will come about since, you know, that is affecting my neighborhood. But, thank you. I mean, but I see like, you know, I, I use, like I said, I use Country Fair like every single day.
Well, we're grateful for that, and the best, the best compliment we ever get is what, what you just said when you started, "Your Country Fair." That's the favorite thing we love to hear. That's, that's it, it's all there for you, you know? That's why we're there. And I can speak to it, but our engineer could probably speak even better, but I personally am not aware of any customers near our location there having a problem with the lighting, but I will tell you that in the past, we have gone to great lengths to put shields up, you know, below the lighting so it focuses in the driveway, so to speak. We're willing to do anything we can to make it better, you know, around our neighborhood, and we do a lot of that. But again, I'm not aware of anyone having a problem, but we certainly could look at that.
Thank you.
And, yeah, and the overall footprint of the store, you know, the lot isn't going to change, so I don't look for us to add a whole bunch of, you know, terrible nuisance lighting, you know what I mean? So, but anyway.
And the employees are always very friendly, not just at my store, but, I mean, that is the truth, too.
Yeah, we, we spend, we spend an awful lot of time on training, trying to get the right people, and trying to get people that want to be with people, because not everybody does. So, I appreciate your comments. Thank you very much.
Any more comments from Council?
Okay. So, I, I'll turn you over to A.J. if he wants to have a few comments about the, the actual construction.
Good morning. My name's A.J. Semino. Thank you for your time. On the bathrooms, I, we'll be putting in very large commercial bathrooms, so it won't be just a single use. And then we will also definitely take a look at the lighting and dark skies is more, don't let your lights shine up, but make, definitely make them shine down so it lights the ground and not neighbors like that. We'll definitely take that into consideration. But we're trying to keep the store in the same footprint. It'll, might shift a little bit, and definitely adding some square footage just to get 30 seats, larger bathrooms, commercial, public bathrooms, because it's not a public, that's the one corner of the city that doesn't have a nice commercial bathroom, so it would be very nice to put one over there as the southeast gateway to the city. And then we try to make it a little bit shown towards the Bayfront Parkway, which is very close to our store, so. Anybody with questions for me?
When, what is the timeline for the project? When is the hopeful start date and the hopeful finish?
Hopeful is, prob, with planning, getting prints, getting prints approved, it would be a three-month to six-month process for all of that, so it wouldn't be happening until the fall at the earliest, with everybody's approvals and all of those things.
Will the, will the store have to shut down for a long time?
If we do raise it, yes, it definitely will have to shut down. We've thought about trying to remodel and, because we don't like to shut down, we like to try to keep them open, but certain properties don't lend that, and then the way that building has been remodeled a couple times, it doesn't really, it's a block structure, so it does not lend to just busting out a little bit here and there. It really, for the time and speed of everything, it probably just needs to come down and then start right back up.
Any other questions from Council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, we don't really have much more. I would like to address your comments on the transfer of licenses. I just wanted you to know that Country Fair has actually purchased city of Erie licenses and transferred, transferred them out to rural areas, so that brings balance for you. I hope it would.
We don't like that, the business, we want as much business in the city as possible. We're not worried about that.
Fair enough, we'll keep that in mind, yeah. So, just to, just to sum up, the, the sole reason in the liquor code why Council could deny this transfer would be if you think there's going to be anything that would affect the health, safety, welfare, and morals of its citizens, of your citizens. I'm happy to answer any questions you would have about that, whether your citizens would be affected in that way. If you don't have any questions, then we thank you very much for your time here today, and would ask that you pass the resolution at the next available opportunity.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I believe the next thing we need to do is, are there any citizens like to speak in favor of the project? Are there any citizens like to speak in favor of the project? Are there any citizens would like to speak in favor of the project? Hearing none. Are there any citizens would like to speak against the project? Are there any citizens would like to speak against the project? Are there any citizens would like to speak against the project? Hearing none, we thank you very much for your presentation, and we'll continue with our agenda.
Thank you all.
That concludes the public hearing, so I think this takes us to committee report.
Councilwoman Floret.
All righty, good morning, everyone. I just wanted to mention that we had an environmental advisory Alrighty, good morning, everyone. I just wanted to mention that we had an environmental advisory council meeting on February twenty-sixth. We had a historical review commission meeting on March fourth. These meetings are available on the city's Facebook and YouTube channel to re-watch at your convenience. I seen a posting that the zoning hearing board meeting will be canceled, and then I did see that we had a ribbon-cutting um event for the Erie Bank on Mar, on, no, on Monday, February twenty-fourth. That's at Tenth and Parade. I'm really happy that that neighborhood has a bank. I grew up on Fifth and Wallace and Parade and having to uh go to the check cashing places as a young person because I didn't know the importance of opening a bank account and finding out to use the banking facilities, you can actually save money and have your money direct deposited, that didn't come till later in life. So just the financial institutions are important for neighborhoods who might not necessarily have access to that, so I'm really happy that we're bringing that to the neighborhood, and then I also wanted to mention that, you know, March is Women's History Month, so Happy Women's History Month, um, it goes from March first through March thirty-first. The theme for Women's History Month of twenty-twenty-five is moving forward together, women educating and inspiring generations. Um, you come from a woman, women nurture you, um, most people should respect their mothers and the women in their community, but sometimes you have to remind people of that, so I just wanted to mention, I'm the eldest of thirteen, and I expect my siblings to respect people as they respect me, and I would hope that other elder sisters and mothers and sisters and aunts are doing the same with everyone in their family, just because it's important to, you know, encourage people to respect the creators of life, so, thank you, that's all I wanted to report, I hope everybody has a great March, just be careful, start slowing down, people aren't paying attention to the pedestrians, which is always a concern when the weather starts warming up, so be safe out there, everyone.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Nelson.
There's um, three things I want to address, um, first, we had an airport authority meeting uh last Wednesday. Uh, things are looking great there, they continue to have great numbers for capacity, uh, this is the stage where the director goes down to some conferences and talks to different airlines that would be interested in applying for an FAA grant, um, the airport would apply on behalf of those airlines that were interested. Um, and they are going to be trying to recruit an airline, most likely American, to go east, or I'm sorry, westward, uh, or eastward, westward was really the bigger point, and they named off a few of them. Um, because right now we have a good flight south, and the ideal situation is that we can go east, west, and south. Um, so, there was a, all the reports there were great, though, they, they only had four empty seats on all the flights that day, and um, you know, the capacities are uh way beyond what the airports or what the airlines are even looking for. Um, second thing, uh, this was discussed at caucus, but I spoke to some members of county council, uh, during COVID, we delayed our our discount for the property tax bills, uh, because of some dysfunction happening at the county courthouse right now. Um, you know, we, we are in a position where the bills aren't coming out quite as late, and I, uh, council discussed it in caucus, I think we'll have a resolution on the agenda next meeting to give a little more of a grace period, uh, but I wanted to let the people know that we're looking into that, um, and that, uh, from my perspective, I think it's very likely. Um, you know, it's, it's kind of a, you know, it, it makes me so happy to work with the mayor, uh, seeing what's happening over there. Uh, you know, the, the county executive just lost a lawsuit that is now being appealed to higher courts uh over his vetoes from the previous budgets, and now, um, and now it's delaying you guys getting bills, uh, which messes up our revenues as well, um, but we're hoping that it is done in a way that impacts you, the taxpayers, the least, uh, even if we have to shuffle some things around here for a bit. And then, uh, third, you know, we had some, uh, public comment about uh immigration, um, she had offered to do a study session with us, I am, I'm very interested in that, I, I hope that's something we could put on the agenda um in the next couple weeks, uh, or months. Um, you know, it's concerning to hear uh how that is impacting uh our residents, uh, you know, immigrants are, uh, you know, vital, a vital aspect of our economy, it's, you know, it's for so many different reasons, um, and they're um hu- humans, so I think a lot of that's getting neglected in the midst of this, you know, these are people created in the image of God and uh should be valued as such. So, um, from my perspective, um, so, you know, I look forward to that, it's um, you know, and I hope that the policies that we have are uh dignifying of their humanity, and I hope that the way those policies are being executed are in line with the administration uh administration's wishes, um, and that there isn't anything going beyond the hopes of the city by any particulars that might have their own values that they would be enforcing, so. Um, that's it for my report, though, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just a quick report out on, on just some of my liaison spots here, uh, EMTA met on two twenty-four, the executive director shared that they, they still have several positions, uh, so if you are interested, they've, you know, you can go on, on their website there um and apply for some of the, the different jobs that they have. Um, they're continuing to work with organizations and authorities to approve, uh, improve transportation, especially Erie events, now that they have taken over uh some of the, the concert series that'll be happening, and they're working hand in hand to make sure that people are able to get there who, who want to partake. Uh, they're also finding creative ways to reduce the cost and the carbon footprint. The Erie Land Bank met, uh, is meeting on three seventeen, I missed the last meeting due to the flu, and so I am in this perpetual cycle of, of catch-up right now, so I will report out on the land bank at our next meeting. Um, the Bureau of Sewers has a meeting, right, that's where we're going next, I, I think that's today. Uh, I'll have to check my calendar when we, when we, when we exit out of here. Uh, to report out on the zoo, great things happening there, they're celebrating their hundred years of operation. Uh, they were awarded two million through an R cap uh from the state, uh, that investment is going to go towards their plans with the veterinary center that they are hoping to make. Um, April seventeenth through, um, I think it's July fifteenth, they'll be hosting the Chinese Lantern Festival. It's a very unique experience, and I'm excited that, that they have brought that in, you know, to the city for people to, to go explore and, and partake in. Uh, on two twenty-seven, I met with the director of the downtown partnership to discuss the, the plethora of projects that they are working on right now, uh, and the plans that they have for the future projects. They are a, a definitely a small but really mighty organization, and they are truly committed to, to elevating Erie's downtown. Um, on Friday, I was at the Erie Black Wall Street Gala, um, on the twenty-eighth here, they, it was, it was an absolutely wonderful and uplifting uh experience to see the, the black excellence and the leadership and, and the investments and, and black businesses around our community um was, was something really amazing to bear witness to, and, and congratulations to all the award recipients, um, and the organizers, organizers of that event. To come back to some of the comments I made uh in caucus, and then also that were brought up today during the meeting, I, as someone who is, who is married to, to an immigrant, what is happening, not just in the Commonwealth that we're seeing across the nation right now, is, is truly, truly startling, and there is a definite tension that is happening right now in our community, I will say, a majority of the phone calls, our messages, and outreaches that I have received have been around this topic, people feeling not heard, people feeling scared, people feeling unsafe. Um, I do think that the administration has a, a set of values and, and a vision that they have for the city. Um, and I, to echo a little bit of what um Council Nelson had said, I, I truly hope that there are not some individuals who are carrying out a different plan and vision based on personal values, uh, versus what the city is trying to create. Because we, we, we are a welcoming city, and I would hate for us to be pulling individuals in here who are incredibly vulnerable um to be not protected and to feel that they cannot use their voice, because I think that that ultimately creates um tension between those individuals and, and the, and the police, um, and I, I don't think we need to, to go down that route, so I truly hope that we're able to uh be a little bit more clear on, on what the policies are, what the expectations are, um, and I would very much like to have a study session so we can truly understand just this, it's really a cumbersome process that a person has to go through, um, to help us, as council educators on that. Um, because what is happening right now in the nation, it is, it is going to fall on the shoulders of all elected officials, local, local electeds, uh, to make sure we're standing up for what is right for all of those who call, call Erie home, and so I, I'll work um with the president and, and with council to, to get that study session set up. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Trup.
Mr. President, um, I want to thank Jasmine for letting me know it was Women's History Month, thank you so much.
You're welcome, no problem.
Happy Women's History Month to all the ladies in the house today, and uh I want to start out by um talking about what Pals was talking about with Mr. Witherspoon. Um, one of the biggest questions I get asked every day, because people ask me questions when I'm in school, is, is Mel still on city council, and you have to be one of the most popular, well-known uh city councilmen persons ever, everybody knows who you are, and I, and I tell people all the time, I just, um, Linux was talking about how many things that you, you have gotten done behind closed doors that nobody knows about. And, and a lot of people think city council people have to be yellers and screamers and, but you were more about action, and not just about yelling and screaming and being loud, and so a lot of things have happened that people don't even know about that because of you being here, so, uh, thanks for all your, your service to the community, to the kids, to generations. Um, also, um, one of the things we're working on, as you know, I work at Erie High School, is um moving one of the city council meetings in May, um, to Erie High School. The students do ask me questions about that all the time, they want to know like about things we're doing, and they're interested. You know, I presented something to them about the parks one time, and you have a certain amount of money in a certain amount of parks, and they had a lot of, lot of answers to that question, how they would divvy the money out or that type of thing, so they are interested in it, and they'll bring some classes down and interact with us and stuff like that. Also wanted to um thank the Pals program, um, you know, I've been working in school for twenty-eight years, and I know when I first started, kids did not want to even be involved with police officers, and they're helping to change that mentality or that thinking. Also, um, Dave, who came in here from Emergicare, I want to reiterate, reiterate what he said about the fire department. Um, thank you for all you do, especially during the, when we were all snowed in and couldn't move anywhere. I heard a young lady talk about immigration, one of the things I heard her talk about was people need to feel safe. That's anywhere, uh, anywhere they go, you know, if we want people to move to our city, one of the biggest things we have to think about is, do people feel safe? And once again, just uh congratulations to the Hoffman family, and that's my report, thank you.
President Witherspoon, may I, I, may I add to that? Um, I apologize, I did want to also acknowledge and thank um the director of Urgent Care who came down. And I would like to also reach out to him to talk to him about potentially arranging for us as council to go up there. Uh, what, what Urgent Care does, um, on such a small, under, underfunded budget, um, is, is really astronomical, and that's something else that we need to be aware of as, as funding streams shift uh nationally at a state level, so thank you again, um, for him, for coming down, and I'll, I'll help arrange for us to get up there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I also want to thank Emergicare, um, this past February, I followed Emergicare to the hospital for a loved one, so um I'm thankful for all that they do. So, um, art is also, um, the month for art, March is also the month for art, and um as an art educator, I understand the need to continue to have art in school and in um citywide programs, because it is a release, a, releases the stress as you uh create art. And I attended uh the gallery night on Friday and was thankful for all the ice sculptures that uh was present for the um time where we had the winter festival in Erie. I am thankful for all the people who uh contribute art, I attended the Erie Arts and Culture Event this past Thursday that highlighted Garrett Hess. He has an amazing uh photography exhibit in uh the old cashier's building at four nineteen uh State Street, it's fog at Presque Isle in different areas of Presque Isle. And um the pictures aren't so foggy that you can't see anything, I mean, it's, they're very, very beautiful pictures of Presque Isle in uh the theme of fog. I am thankful for the arts and culture around the city and how they serve northwestern Pennsylvania. The Art Museum is a wonderful place, too, uh, I continue to uh find amazing exhibits there and thankful for the times that they have free um admission. I do have um an admission to the Arts Museum that um I should go more often actually than I do. So, people who are waiting, um, like Mr. Nelson said, the um taxes will be out shortly, and we'll be taking care of that. I too would like to see a study session, I'm affirming that for our welcoming city and um the things that are going on. So, I also attended last night a JPT fundraiser, which raised eight hundred dollars for the food bank, and I'm thankful to the bands that played, the Erie uh Red Hot Rug Cutters are back after their hiatus, and um I'm thankful to the other musical events that I attended this weekend at City Gallery and uh all around town. Um, that is one of the place, reasons why I love Erie's s- city so much, is because of our music and our art venues, because it's um a great place to relieve stress in your life. So, um, a kudos to Chuck Robey, a childhood friend, who retired on me and um didn't want me to acknowledge his uh work in the city of Erie after probably forty years um in parks and driving the trucks in the street, thank you so much. Um, we have had some deaths, um, very tragic, um too many deaths happening, and um so lifting everybody up that way. Um, Erie Water Works, so um we have our uh CEO of Erie Water Works, Craig Palmer, who uh has made the um Penn State Baron magazine, and I would just like to highlight a few things that um he says, "I think a lot of people take for granted what is required to get water from Lake Erie into your home or business." And he's fine with that, he doesn't want the two hundred twenty thousand consumers to worry about their water. We have uh an average of two hundred fifty water main breaks a year, and they almost never happen between eight AM and five PM. And uh if you've been driving around the city of Erie, it's been a harsh, terrible, horrible winter, and those water uh people are out there in frigid weather in all times of the day and night. So among Erie Water Works' biggest challenges emerging contaminates and aging infrastructures. Water treatment has become much more complex with the discovery of microplastics, PFAs and other potentially harmful contaminants, Palmer said. We have to stay on top of the science so we can be as proactive as possible. So, thank you Craig Palmer, CEO, and all who are on the Water Authority and all of the many employees, I think it says they have one hundred and six employees at Erie Water Works who keep the water flowing. I think it says they have 106 employees at Erie Water Works who keep the water flowing and, um, helping with all kinds of things there. I attended the PALS Ball and was, uh, so happy to do so. I affirm all that they do, working with our students. And I also love that they have a memoriam page and, um, keep in memory Officers Patrolman Michael Conway, who passed away, and Patrolman Jason Belton and Sergeant Gary Tacon. So they keep them, um, honored every year as well. And unfortunately, I stepped to use the restroom and missed Melvin Witherspoon's award during the PALS. So, um, congratulations, even though I didn't actually see you get your award. Thank you, have a nice day.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Lieutenant Lennox and his team once again for the, uh, award that they presented me. And I do plan on continuing to travel that same route when it deals with young kids who sometimes do adult things when they shouldn't. It's more than basketball, it's more than PAL. We use that as a conduit to find out what the total family needs are. I'd like to thank them, uh, once again. Also, I'd like to thank our Public Works Director for job well done. Uh, we had some major problems, uh, here in Chamber and they re- did some quick repairs and sufficient repairs for us to meet today. I'd like to thank them. Also, I'd like to thank Emergent Care. When I hurt my arm, I called 911. Emergent, Emergent Care came. It was a lot of snow out there. And he borrowed my shovel and shoveled the driveway and the steps in order for the three of us to get to the vehicle. And that is unusual. That is unusual. He was concerned about our safety from the house to the vehicle. And would I like to thank the two gentlemen publicly for stepping outside the circle to make things happen in a safe manner. Report from the controller.
The only thing, the department's working on the, uh, state report that needs to be filed by the end of the month. So we're hopefully going to get that filed in the next week and a half or so. And I'll notify council when the state's, uh, gotten the, the reports. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you. Report from the Solicitor's Office. Report from the administration.
Good morning, council. I'm going to be brief. I'm afraid my, my voice is going to give out. But we have a lot going on. We have, um, finally our, we'll be embarking on the comprehensive, uh, parks recreation and open space plan. Really excited about that and just want residents to be aware that we will be reaching out to get their input on what their priorities are for the city-owned parks. We're also going to be, and I discussed this in caucus, but we'll be applying to the Commonwealth, to the stamp, uh, grant to do our second five-year financial management plan. Hoping to get that underway so we can have recommendations before the next budget cycle. Um, we're also about to embark on a com- comprehensive housing strategy for the city. Very excited about that as well. We've been wanting to do that for a couple of years and just haven't been able to get the staff time together to do it. But, um, that's a top priority. And then we're working on, um, several grants right now. I know there's been a lot of concern at the federal level. We have several requests for additional information that we've received from the federal government, uh, from DOJ, from EPA, from Department of Energy, from FEMA. We're having to respond back very quickly with, um, data, with, uh, information, with, uh, potential, uh, award modifications. And so that's been a little bit stressful, uh, in the midst of also working on submitting several state grant applications. And, but we're, we're staying on top of everything and, um, we'll keep you posted. That's all I have for today.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion from council on any issue?
Looking forward to the park and recreation and open space plan. I've been hearing about it for the last three years, so I'm, I'm intrigued.
Very good. Hearing none, meetings adjourned.
City council adjourns at 10:12 AM. Members Witherspoon, Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Titus and Troop.